Reading a public announcement pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 5th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the numbers of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Topsfield Board of Selectmen will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Topsfield website at www.topsfield-ma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. Video conference, using the login information you see below and post it on the website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Topsfield website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And with that, I officially bring the meeting to order. A few announcements. The meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk for record-keeping. Is there anybody else present who wishes to record the meeting?
I would like to record it.
Okay, so Mr. Gant, as well as Debbie. So on to temporary signage, signed bylaw. Glenn, do I hand this to you or to you and Kevin?
Yeah.
Probably to the both of us.
Yeah, exactly. Mr. Chairman, I'll kick it off and then let Glenn fill in some of the details because he's been on the ground floor with what we're going to update you on. So as we get closer to election time, we've seen that some upticks, obviously, in people putting signage out on their properties in other locations as well, politically-minded signs specifically for candidates. We have a bylaw that limits signage for candidates to be put out no earlier than 60 days before an event. We actually had, when we went out and spoke with a couple of the neighbors, one of them actually hired an attorney who reached out to us indicating that they're in the belief that the 60-day component of the signed bylaw might not be enforceable. Had a chance to talk with KP Law. KP Law actually confirmed. And so Glenn and I have sort of been talking recently about how we're going to manage, before we got that indication from KP, which was sort of just taking a pause as we were getting information. Now that we have that feedback from KP Law, one, it's sort of just, what does that mean from an operational standpoint? The position, I think, or at least the thought I have on it is that, based on what KP indicated, that anybody who wants to put a sign up on private property, a typical standard sign that you would see for a lawn sign for a political candidate, we can't limit the, based on First Amendment rights and freedom of speech, from them to do so. That being said, we do have the ability to limit the number of signs and the size of the signs. And so for private properties, based on how we've been operating and based on the bylaws, the thought is to continue to do what we've done, except allow them to meet. So if someone puts 12 signs on their lawn, let them know that they can have one sign on their lawn and then they'll remove the other 11. And if anyone puts a sign, whether it's a commercial sign, political sign, or other on public property, we'll continue to remove those signs as well, like we have been doing. But I didn't want to start implementing that plan of action because signs can be very sensitive, obviously, especially coming close to the election, without having a conversation with the board and just updating them on what we'd found out through KP Law. Glenn, obviously, you've been out there on the ground, talking with the neighbors. Do you want to give a little insight or add a little to what's been going on?
Yeah, this kind of came about because of a complaint I got from a resident on Brookside. They had like 10 or 11 signs out. And so we started a campaign to kind of get people to take the signs down. And one of them hired the judge, it's one of your neighbors, Donna, I think. And so, you know, that's basically it. We haven't, I haven't, I took some signs down last week or the week before that were on the corner of Ipswich Road and High Street. And I continue to take signs down that, you know, are student painters, any, that type of sign that are on town property. I just stop and pick them up. The thing is, there's no, there's no real difference with what Kevin said, there's really no difference between a political sign and a sign for student painters or handyman services or anything like that. If it's on town property, it's not supposed to be. So I, you know, we're just gonna, you know, the plan is to just continue, continue with the enforcement based on the recommendation from KP Law, provided that the selectmen want to, you know, want to abide by those rules. However, it's, it's contrary in some instances to what the bylaw says. What the zoning bylaw says. And the zoning bylaw lays out size, and in my opinion, it limits the number of signs to one, because it's, most of the bylaw says a sign, which is in a singular, so that's the way I look at it. I mean, if somebody wants to put out two signs, they can go to the Board of Selectmen and get a special permit for it, I guess.
Okay, one of the things, I think we have to be careful of is to not mix, we can talk about them, but there are several different issues here. The issue of signage on town property, not a personal property, is one issue that's very clear in our approach, that you can't put it on town property unless there's a particular sign permit, such as we're announcing some type of a walk or ride or something of that nature where someone, a nonprofit, comes to us and gets the permission. So I think, and that's been going on, this is not something new, it's very clear, and you've done a great job with that, Glenn. Now, on the political signs, that is a different issue, of course. We've kind of always known that our 60 days really wouldn't stand up in court. But it's been a tradition in the town of Topsfield that we ask people to not put out signs before 60, 60 days before the election. So it looks like we've been challenged on it. We don't have, in my mind, we don't have a choice, there's no point. Here's our choice, our choice is to go to the person and say, you know, listen, we understand that you're winning court, but kind of like the tradition of the town and the way the signed bylaw is written, it asks for 60 days. If you don't want to abide by that, you certainly, in that particular case, because of First Amendment rights, you can, you can put the sign out. Now, as far as the number of signs, I think we want to be careful. I think our interest is to have only one sign on a property for one candidate. But for example, if somebody wants to put out a sign for the mayor, whatever, for a selectman, and for the president, that's a different election. If they want to put out two signs for two different positions, or let's say for the town meeting, for, excuse me, our town election, if somebody wanted to put out a sign for the library trustee and for a selectman, or two selectmen, they could, let's say that, one library trustee and two selectmen, that in my mind is fine, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the number of signs for the same person. And I think that's the case where you get a chance to put out one sign for a person.
One of the things that Glenn and I had actually a really productive and lengthy conversation earlier today on this, before the meeting, one thing we sort of pointed out too is, if there's multiple types of signs that someone wants to put out, they're not just one, two candidates, so if it's a Dick Gant and a Marshall Hook sign, you know, that seems acceptable to a certain degree, or if it's a presidential sign and a selectman or a library trustee. One of the concerns with trying to balance that and being consistent would be, though, if they, if they put 12 signs out, or more different signs, different candidates, or different, you know, a 2020 graduation sign and a first responder sign, and then you have sort of that same sort of dynamic where it might not be a single candidate, but you have a yard full of different signage, which I'm going to guess might give us a call or two here, either Glenn's office or mine. So we recognized that, and we were sort of talking through that, and I think it's a really great point, something that, you know, I want to make sure the board's comfortable with how we address that as well, because if it's one type of sign, we could still have that potential of having a number of signs on the yard, different candidates, different purposes. If we limit it to that one, like Glenn was saying, singular in the bylaw, it would prohibit people from putting more than one out, but it would be consistent, I guess you could say, across the board.
Yeah. Lauren, okay about limiting the number of signs? We can't get into what they're, they're supporting, because as you said, they could be supporting, conserving water, they could be supporting a movement, they could be supporting the schools in general, you know, the, so can we limit the same concept like that, the same candidate or a political point of view to one sign?
Glenn, I don't, I don't believe you can, because that's regulating content and you can't do that.
Yeah, so back to if someone wants to put 12 signs for the same person, that's a content issue and we can't regulate that.
Well, for the same person, we can ask them not to, is my understanding. If it's 12 different candidates, or 12 different 2020 sign, first responder, and then three different candidates, we don't, I don't believe First Amendment, we don't have the right to stop that. I just flag it sort of just eyes wide open to, in the event that somebody wanted to put multiple flags, we might, multiple signs, we might still get some calls from people saying, you know, their yard's filled with signs, this is against the bylaw, and then we'll have to go out there and make the decision and address it accordingly.
Okay, I'm just not, I'm not clear, I'm sorry if I'm being slow on this. There are two different ideas here. One is if you have 10 signs for the same person. Another one is if you have 10 different signs for all different concepts and things that you're supporting. What did Lauren say was our ability to limit? Can we limit the 10 signs for one person? Can we limit the 10 signs for multiple concepts?
So the former, so my understanding is that we can limit the number of signs that someone might put out for a single candidate.
Okay.
I think we're in good standing on that.
Yep. I'd just like to say that, to me, there is a significant difference between political signs and temporary signs as defined. To me, the congratulations class of 2020 would be a temporary sign, and that could go on a lawn, and that's already covered for 14 days, and so the bother's only 14 days. I'm more concerned, political signs, they could be out until November with justification and reason. So the question is going to be, from my point of view, that elections aren't that often, they're a celebration of how we run our country or do our best to try to run our country. And on that basis, I personally see no discomfort in having a lot of political signs around when it happens. It's kind of an active thing, and actually, I believe, sometimes reminds people to vote or at least to find out about the issues. I'm more interested in the temporary signs. My sense is that the article that you put in here, Glenn, attached, is exactly what we currently have, is that correct?
I'm sorry, what article?
The one that Jen included in this, this is Article 13. This is just as it is currently accepted in our bylaws, right?
Right.
The current bylaw.
Okay, so this is for reference.
Yes.
Yeah.
So what is the question before us?
As a work session, I just wanted to make sure, political season coming up, a change in sort of, or better direction, I should say, from KP Law. I just wanted to make sure that the board had an opportunity to hear and ask any questions as we are now have better guidance in how we're going to be implementing the bylaw going forward. So that was the purpose of bringing it for agenda item purposes.
Does the bylaw need to be modified, then?
I believe it will need to be.
Really?
It's going to have to be, it's going to have to be tweaked a little bit. I, I'm not sure whether it should be tweaked to have a specific number of signs, but it's clear that we can limit the number of signs, but what we can't, what we can't regulate is content. So if, you know, if somebody had six signs on their, on their lawn, and they were all for different things, for a neighbor's lawn mowing service, for a political candidate or two political candidates, you know, and a handyman service and that type of thing, if we allow six signs, then we can't, we can't regulate. You know, they could all, they could all be the same. So, you know, where the bylaw, in my opinion, is written in the singular, I think that we're, we can regulate the number and we can regulate the size on private property, all right? But we can't regulate the content.
And even regulating the number, Glenn, it sounds like we have to be specific, because we're only able to regulate the number of signs for the exact same person, but we can't regulate if they have 12 different candidates or 12 different signs for the same cause.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not completely convinced, and I haven't, I haven't read through what Propplement and Page said, and maybe Kevin could respond to this, but I'm not certain that, that we can't regulate that. I mean, if we have, if we have a, the signed bylaw says one, six square foot sign, for example, then, then that's, then that's what they can have. And I don't believe that it's intended to be, you know, one six-square-foot sign for, you know, six different causes, Glenn.
Yep.
Okay, I'm feeling like I'm hearing two different things, though. I just heard you could have different clauses, different candidates, which is more than one. So.
One per sign.
One per message.
One per message.
One per message. And.
But unlimited.
Different kinds of messages, okay? One of the messages is for contractors that, this lawn mowing or whatever it is, and we make it clear that while somebody is, for example, having their kitchen redone, they can have a sign up of the ABC Kitchen Company is the contractor. And while they're doing that, that's all right. And in some ways, it's a public service, because somebody might want to know, gee, who is doing their kitchen? Not that it's a necessary one, but, but it is something that we allow, and for good reason. It supports businesses of sorts, and it serves an interest that the public may have as to who's doing what in a house, putting up a roof, who's doing the roof there. So that's a different kind of sign that we have, and it's controlled by the time that it's going on. Now, if that sign about the kitchen stays up there for six months after the kitchen is done, that's not right, that's not allowed. So there's a couple of different nuances as to these, quote, temporary signs.
Yeah, Dick, I think there's an issue as I look at the sign, the bylaw, it says temporary signs, very clear, political signs are temporary signs for the purposes of the bylaw and so on, shall not exceed six square feet. If that's okay and KP supports us, great. They should not be posted more than 60 days prior to the date of an event being ever taken. So we need to put in at some point, and right now, we just don't have to enforce it, but we need to put in at some point that political signs are exempted. My understanding is that we can control non-political signs and they're being posted more than 60 days prior to an event. Is that your understanding, Glenn? Does that only apply to, the exemption only applies to political?
It's not.
No.
Well, one of the things we're talking, two things we're talking about here is signs on, signs on private property and signs on town property. Signs on private property, and Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, please, but I don't believe you can limit the, you can limit the size and the number, but you can't limit the duration.
Okay.
Where ours, where our bylaw says 14 days and then no more than 30 in the aggregate in a calendar year, you can't regulate that.
Those are advertisements.
Pardon me?
Those are advertisements. You're talking about advertisements? And you're saying we can't uncontrol those?
I'm talking about, I'm talking about any sign, because you can't, you can't differentiate between, between sign types, because if you do, you're regulating content, Dick, and I think that's a really slippery slope for the town.
I mean, I think of the guy who sells mailboxes out on 1 Route 97. I presume all his sample mailboxes, all those posts are set back on his private property. That's a business, and he uses a sign there to do it. I assume you've taken a look at that and so on. His sample mailboxes don't have additional marketing information on them, so he could call them decorative if he wished. But that would be an example of where we explicitly can let that stay, must let that stay for as long as he chooses to keep that sign up.
We have temporary.
You're allowed to have a two-foot sign of your business on your private property, that's a given. Now, the content of it, there's an issue there, I'm not going to get into that one, but he has every right to put up that two-foot or less sign that says birdhouse sold or whatever, selling birdhouses, that's, that's okay, he can do that, that's part of our bylaw.
Yep, no, I'm not trying to put the guy out of business, I'm trying to figure out, you know, one of the challenges we have is what's on town property and what's not. Glenn, we leave that to you for now.
Town property is always a different story.
I understand that, and I'm just trying to get a clearer picture of what, is there anything we can do? Apparently, the only thing we can control at this point is private, sign size on private property, for private property, sign size, and the numeric copies of a sign with the same message. And by the way, what happens if one says, "Vote for Bill," and the next one says, "Bill deserves your vote"? Are those the same signs? What are we going to do?
I don't, I don't think that, again, this is my interpretation of the bylaw, but I think that that's two signs, and I don't believe that our, our bylaw allows that, you know? It says a temporary sign or a sign, and I think if they want more than that, then they can certainly, you know, there's a mechanism to fix that, and that's, that's going to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And they can always challenge us too. So if Glenn takes one of the signs or asks them to take it down, if it's on private property, and, you know, either they do, and then they come back and say, you know, sort of like with the most recent, what sort of spurred this conversation was, went out, asked to remove them, they removed them, but came back and said, well, we want to put them back up, and we think your bylaw's not, the 60-day, it was purely, again, the 60-day with everything else, it was the 60-day and the number of signs and the size of the sign. And so I think we're, I think we've got a good plan. If we have very specific sort of nuanced issues that come up, we'll certainly work through them based on the constituent, the neighbors' level of interest in seeing what the result might look like. And if we have to circle back with a very quick conversation with KP for legal advice during the process, we certainly will. But I think, Vice Chair, I mean, as you mentioned earlier, do we have to rewrite the bylaw? I think it's something we'll certainly take a hard look at, and I think this is certainly spurring the conversation further. So I think we can operate within what we have, but we can, I think we talked about this a month or so ago, when Topsfield Motors came up about looking at the sign bylaws further anyway, so I think this will be part of that conversation.
Kevin, could I ask you, if, the key issue here is the content. You can't differentiate between political speech and any other type of speech, but if you made a ruling across the board, any type of speech, any temporary sign, we have a limit to how long it can be up. Is that legal?
Not on private.
Not on private property. Public property, we can take it the first day it's up.
Okay, so they can keep it up as long as they want. I'm thinking, as it relates to downtown, on private business property, there are temporary signs that we restrict to 30 days total for the year, and we had everyone take down their A-frames. Those are temporary signs that are on their property.
You can probably make an argument if they're, even if they're a temporary base type of sign, that if they're there for a prolonged period of time, that they're using it for other purposes, and we might, I think, if something, existing bylaw as it's written, if someone were to review it on their own, would look at it and say, okay, I have 60 days with a political sign, I can do this with a different type of sign. I think that we'll certainly, if somebody's putting up a commercial sign on private property for extended, you'd probably make the argument that it's an advertisement now of sorts, and that we need some, an authorization from the board to do so. Glenn, do you agree with that assessment?
I don't, I don't know, Kevin, because that's not going to, that may be applicable to a business, but not to, you know, not to, maybe applicable to a business downtown with an A-frame sign, but I'm not sure that it would be to the, to the, you know, the person working in one of the residential zones that has a key-cutting business or is a social worker or, or something like that, you know?
Those signs are permitted. If you're, you have a petting business, you're right, put the two-foot sign out, yes, in the residential area.
Right.
So Kevin, here's my question, actually, this is to everyone. I hear we have some clarification, and in terms of decisions, whether to enforce and so on, clearly, we realize that political signs are not held to the 60-day. There are other questions that have come up and so on. I think one of the problems we have is we say all these things about temporary signs. Temporary signs are everything from the A-frame that's up to, you know, somebody who is waiting for their big sign to come in, and is, I mean, there's a lot of things on that. The second thing that I wonder about is Martha Morrison has often said that it's the planning board that proposes all the zoning changes. And so I wanted to suggest that it might make sense to, Kevin, perhaps you, as a first place, talk with her about these issues, and not this year, of course, but sort of tee up for next year, any changes that we will or should make in order to clean this up. I'm not sure, since we've identified it and recognized there are a lot of issues, we don't even really have clear answers on as we sit here and talk. We should carry this forward.
Yes, and I think Glenn and I, part of the reason we sat down and talked about this at length this morning was it was Evaluation Day, and one of, one of the goals is to get a better handle on the signed bylaws this coming year. So Glenn and I will work together on taking a little deeper dive and trying to find out what we need to do, if anything, to sort of.
Yeah, and I would, I would say, in addition to checking with Martha Morrison, Glenn, you're so close to the ground on what the realities are and so on, and the types of issues and how they come up, that obviously Kevin's inclusion of you in those conversations, I think, will be important. We've wrestled over these signed bylaws ever since I moved to town, and maybe we could clean them up if we spend a little time during a quiet period trying to take care of some of these issues.
Are we going to have a quiet period, John?
Yeah, I'm scheduling it, yep. July through, through next July, I guess.
I'll take that.
So I don't want to shut off conversation here, but I realize that asking a lot of questions, which will have to continue to be asked, but we don't have answers to enough base questions that I think a detailed analysis is something we can do in real time in a working session. So definitely, this will come back to us, the level of detail. Dick, I know you've got a real sense of certain things in this. I think that having a real document we can look at that might propose the necessary changes would be a good next step for us in public session, but in between, working out with those who kind of own the regulations.
I have, I have a couple of comments, and one is that I think it would be helpful if, obviously, the Board of Selectmen being the special primate granting authority for signs, if based on our conversation today, what I've said and what Kevin has said, if, if you could put, if you have specific questions, then if, if we could get, just get something in writing, then we could, we would, could probably better address that. If you have specific concerns about the signed bylaw, it would be, it's always easy to look at something in writing, and then if we have to ask KNP the question, then we could do that. But, and the other thing, John, is to speak to something you said earlier about town property versus private property. I typically will use my best judgment. I mean, a right-of-way may be 50 feet wide, it may be 60 feet wide, but the road isn't always in the center of that right-of-way.
Yeah.
So.
I don't expect you to go out with a transit and road map.
But if it's not, if it's not, if it's, if it, if it could be considered on someone's property, if it's far enough back from the street so that, you know, a kid you know, a kid riding down the, down the sidewalk on a bicycle, if he falls off, he's not gonna get a stick in the eye or, or, or something like that. He's not gonna get hurt by the sign, then um uh, I, I, I probably wouldn't take it down if it looks like it's on, um, it could potentially be on someone's private property. I, I, I won't do that. Um, I may go knock on their door and ask them um if that is their property, and um and if it isn't, would they please, could they, you know, please find another location for the sign? Um, but that's, that's typically my approach to it.
Yep.
In many cases, um Glenn, they might just not know they've crossed over into the town property, and they just need to bring it back a little bit closer to their house.
Yeah, people think they own right to the edge of the road. I, I've, I've run into that recently too with a sign that I picked up and um and then I, I ended up bringing it back and um helped them get a new stand for it and um, and helped them pick out a spot where they could put it that um that was on their property but still visible.
That was nice. Thank you.
Welcome.
That was good. So in a way, I think we'll have further conversation on this. There is some tuning up that I think needs to happen. Um, what I'd like to do, given that um it's three thirty-six right now, if the consensus is to move forward, I would like to move on to the next item.
Next item.
Let's do it. Okay. Uh, next item is the CARES Act funding, and Kevin, I turn this over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thanks, Glenn.
You need me or want me, anybody? Not on the beach.
We don't want to be harsh, but.
We're done.
Leave, right? Okay. Everyone have a good weekend.
Thank you, Glenn. Thank you.
Um, so CARES Act, so uh we talked about this um a week ago. Uh, we, we are fortunate enough that the um CARES Act recently has allocated five hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars to the town of Topsfield to be spent to help with impacts of COVID nineteen. Um, two weeks ago, I asked all the departments to prepare items that they've spent to date, um expenditures they've had related to COVID, and also to put a projection together from now until December thirtieth of what expenses they anticipate spending. Um, received that information back and then working with uh Chief Collins Brown, uh Catherine Gabriel and Donna Rich, we were able to take all that information, uh sort, sort it, organize it, and come up with a um, a priority list of items that we um we believe are, are related to COVID and also um essential for us to, for our operations um in the event that there is impacts, continued impacts for the rest of this year, calendar year. Um, so after compiling that list, a couple of days ago, I sent it off uh to the state for an off-the-record sort of look at the list, to make sure things on there are eligible uh for the, for the CARES money. And um the way the application works is that um due tomorrow, they've extended it a week, that's why we're still talking about this. Um, due tomorrow, um and which I'm playing this, this evening, um is a high-level assessment from different types of categories. There's five categories in the CARES Act application. It's an electronic application. Um, and so I've taken the expenditures we expect to incur, broken them into the different categories, and then that will be submitted uh again, following this conversation. Um, we are not tied to the exact dollar amount in each of those five uh categories that we'll be submitting in. It's, it basically gives them the ability to then authorize and wire us the, the dollar amount that we're requesting. The money will then be provided to the town. We'll have an account set up, which Catherine's working on, and the money will be drawn down on based on our expenditures as we go for the rest of the year. Some reclasses will take place on existing expenditures that we've already had that are not eligible for other grant funding like FEMA um or the MAPC money that we receive. So this is an update for you folks, just to let you know that we are gonna be moving forward with this. Um, we, we will be, we will receive the money, any money that either is not determined to be eligible or any money that is um, that we do not spend up to the full amount um at the end of the year will be returned. Um, so if our actual expenditures are less than the five eighty-four, two eighty-seven, um we'll return that money. Um, and every two weeks from now until the end of the year, we provide an update to the state on what we're spending our funds on, and they basically just collect that and, and acknowledge it. So um I wanted to give a little bit more clarity on the CARES Act funding, let you know that we are submitting it um today, like I said, this evening, hopefully. Um, and then if there's any final questions from the board, wanted to just provide the opportunity to just talk through that. But I do want it before that, I just want to acknowledge really, again, the hard work by Chief Collins Brown, who has been right in there in, in the trenches with me, helping me put the numbers together, as well as Donna and, and Catherine, who ultimately, now that we, once we receive the funds, will be um really with Chief and myself, working on managing the reporting process associated with the CARES funding going forward. Um, so that, that's basically, I just, as a work session, again, wanted to make sure you folks were aware of where we are with it. Um, we're grateful for the money, and I'm also grateful for all the department heads who gave us in a timely fashion some estimates on some of their costs they expect to have as well.
Kevin, how much is actually being requested?
Um, five hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Oh, the full amount?
We don't want to leave any money on the table until we have.
You can ask for it all. If you have to return it later, that's okay, but I really appreciate this, knowing that there has been a tremendous amount of extra work that's been done. The beauty is that if we can be reimbursed for a large chunk of that somehow, um not only does it keep us a little more whole for this year, but um it's almost like we've been paid to do some incredible training that we could not ever have um planned or paid for otherwise, so um I kind of like this idea, and Kevin, appreciate you and Jenny, Donna, just leading, running forward on this and making it happen. It's great.
Yeah, it's exciting. We're very grateful for the funding. It's gonna be, it's definitely gonna be put to good use.
So just to understand, um what we don't request now, if we requested five hundred thousand dollars instead of the full amount, then there would be no way to request the additional amount up to our limit because we, we only estimated that we would need five hundred thousand dollars. It, it all has to be in within the next two weeks as an estimate, or we don't, anything more than our estimate, we don't get.
So um there is the possibility. So my understanding, it's, there's a lot of, I know the direction we're going is the direction most communities are doing, and it's, it's accurate to what that we've been told from the state. There's a, there's the belief that at a later date, if you don't request the full amount, you can do go through the same process we're going through now and request more funds later if you haven't asked for the whole amount.
So maybe, maybe later we could, but we're not sure. Now, they asked for five categories. In other words, if you put in a hundred thousand roughly, a hundred thousand in for each of the categories, and we find out that uh A, B, C, D, E categories, and we find out that A category really uh we spent two hundred thousand dollars, but we only spent twenty thousand in B. Um, are we constrained to those categories?
No, we're not. As long as it's reimbursed.
Good, that, I got it. Lastly, to what extent has the school been involved in this?
So I've talked with um Dr. Morrison, uh Steve Greenberg and Sharice um a couple of times since the notification came to us. Um, they're looking at um, they've asked if there's funds available, they're looking at technology and PPE. Um, they're using, um, they're looking to use their tailings, it's, the, the, the funds available to them to make a significant purchase on technology that wasn't expected that they would be making. So from a technology standpoint, there's always a need, but it's not as great of a need as it was um maybe a couple of months ago, as I understand it from them.
Could you just tell us what the schools are, what, what are the, what are the schools looking for? And do they represent, for example, one of five categories? I, I, can you, give us, give us the categories? That would be great. As a matter of fact, uh why, why don't you send us the, all the work that you've done as far as the estimates, which you're gonna submit, so we can see the categories and how the amounts come out and things like that? That would be great.
So core municipal service, school distance learning, expanded public health mission, service and supports to residents, and the fifth category is other. And so we, we're, yeah, we're, we're covering all five, uh four of the five categories. Um, service and supports to residents, um, we were able to, we, the services we provided, there's some gray area where you put in one category or the other, we put in a different one.
Kevin, could I ask, with the, the tailings that you mentioned and this additional funding coming through CARES, does the school still require the additional monies that we put into the budget that will be voted on at town meeting?
So it's, I have a call up to uh Dr. Morrison this morning. Um, they've, it's been a little bit of a moving target with sort of what, how they're gonna take the funds that are available to them based on the, again, as they refer to as tailings. Um, and they, I've tried to, how do I put this? So the CARES money is very limited in how you can spend it. Um, however, legislation's allowed us, the, the town to use free cash to help with our operations uh with a, a vote from the Board of Selectmen. So if we get in a position six months from now, three months from now, where um we're running in the negative, but we have free cash available, um and we don't want to have a special town meeting to pull from the stabilization fund, we can do that with a two-thirds vote from the, the Board of Selectmen. That was recent legislation that was just passed. Um, if we were able to get the funding back from the schools, um, the four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that they're projecting that they'll have, that money would end up going back to free cash and be available to us from an operating standpoint. They voted a week and a half ago to take that funding and allocate it to different categories. Um, technology was one, um PPE was another, and I think there was a couple of other ones as well. Um, so I'm having conversations right now with the schools about possibly reducing what they're gonna spend out of the tailings instead of spending down the zero, give back some funding, and then if we can use CARES money potentially to offset that so that we can get that, basically, we're able to then take, say, twenty thousand dollars of technology in the CARES, they give us twenty thousand back of their tailings, that goes to free cash, we can use that for operating, and they still get the full technology that they're looking for. Um, that's sort of what the conversation, so it's a little bit of a moving target in that we're sort of trying to figure out how to possibly do that. They, they've, they, they're very um uh, I think um very committed to, to making sure that the money that they have available, available to them right now. Um, they are able to spend the, to the amount that they feel they need out of there. Um, and so it's just a matter of seeing if there's um, if the mechanism I just explained is something that they'd be willing to consider, and, but we're having the conversations and um when I, we talked about the, even above and beyond those tailings, you know, the conversation was, you know, if there's an opportunity, we certainly could use it. Um, but they didn't give a specific dollar amount that we need exactly this amount of money in order to do this, or this amount of money to do that. Um, you know, we put a five thousand dollar PPE number here for the schools, for example.
What was the number that went in for technology for the schools into the CARE request?
So right now, um, again, it's very much a moving target because this budget's gonna change as things progress, and we find that there's other costs that we incur. Um, so it's, it's a very soft number. It's not a hard number that this is it, but I, I've currently having the budget twenty thousand dollars. But that's, again, if, I haven't talked to uh Dr. Morrison about if we, you know, if the twenty thousand comes in, can we take twenty off the warrant? Or can we do it through the tailings to offset some of that? I'm trying to work through that, and that's part of what the final dollar amount, I think, will look like. It's based on those conversations that we'll be having over the next week or so.
Yeah, Lynn, just to give a little context and so on from a recent conversation uh uh with uh Dr. Morrison, um, if we end up in a situation where we have to have more isolation, then we're going to need more technology. So, you know, if we wanted to run many, many more Zoom meetings, if we had to have video servers that would handle that, so on and so forth, whatever, so there's some adjustment to the system if that is necessary. Um, and it was also interesting that um he was kind of wondering whether this might spell the end of snow days. Um, if in fact you could do distance learning on any day that was a snow day. Um, we all know that has problems with uh downed lines and everything, but uh, you know, there may be some savings in other regards. But I think the technology, um clearly, that target is, Kevin has been saying, that's another target that's moving very rapidly.
Is additional technology they anticipate for the um distance learning to be infrastructure-related at the school or actual PCs, equipment for the students? Or a combination?
Um, I, I don't have an itemized list of exactly what they're expecting to spend on technology, but my understanding is that um they've, I believe it's for the students, possibly both, but I, I certainly wanted to clarify that with Dr. Morrison once we've had a chance to talk more detail. My hope is to get an itemized list at a certain degree, at least high level of, just like you said, hardware, software, um teacher-related, student-related. I know they've made investments over the last couple of years on technology um which have helped them when we went remote this year, so they were thinking forward-thinking and having what they needed. Because according to the schools I talked to, if they didn't have the funding available to them that was approved last year, when everybody went home, it, it would have been a much different type of learning environment, if any, for the students. So this additional technology is helping them get prepared for next year or what could happen in the fall.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Kevin, to uh share on that?
No, just again, thank you to the whole team. It was a, a significant team effort to pull this all together in a short time period and working out sort of logistics and the plan and recording processes, all that has to be created, and the team's doing great work on it. So just a thank you to everybody on the line.
That's great. So what I'd like to do is hand it over as we move to the next item um to you and Gary to talk about uh Complete Streets.
Excellent. Um, Gary, I'll just take a real quick high level on and then hand it over to you if that works for you. Um, so uh we were awarded uh a year ago a Complete Street grant um in the amount of three hundred and, I think, eighty-three thousand dollars. Um, which is Grove Street. Um, and, and it comes around, Grove, moving part of, right, comes around and, and comes to the uh right here by the parking lot here at Town Hall. Um, the sidewalk work um includes granite curbing in sections of it and replacement on Grove Street of the existing um asphalt sidewalks. Um, as part of the procurement process, um there was an RFP that um both Donna Rich and, and Gary worked on uh as well as with World Tech, who's our consultant on this project, our engineering firm that's working with us. And um we received uh a number of bids to let the team get into. Um, and we now have a low bidder who um we are looking to accept um as such, and able to move forward with um an agreement to, to keep the project moving. So um Gary, do you want to um maybe give some more detail into what, where we are and what we're looking for?
You're on mute.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, so the bid's gone out, notice of award has gone out, we're waiting for that signature back um with JJ Phelan, the company out of Tewksbury, Mass. Um, my understanding with Bill Morris, the Vice President of World Tech, um they've worked with them in the past, a reputable, obviously contractor that he's looking forward to working with again. Um, that being said, the bid did come in, we were worried because in the beginning um in talking with Bill, many of these complete streets were coming in over budget much greater than granted by Complete Streets because the contractors were holding the town hostage because the economy was going so well. Um, and they had so much work, they were throwing numbers out there and seeing if it would stick to the refrigerator, if you will. Well, one of the silver linings and everything that has happened, that was not the case with this award, and they came in, and this, our particular one came in underneath at three, three twenty-two, six fifty-five. So that being said, that's fantastic. There's scope of work in that that we might not have done because we were not gonna be able to fit it all in. So we're gonna try, it has to be in the parameters of that project to be used still. Um, but that being said, one of the additions we're gonna try to do is the outbound sidewalk, if you will, from Parsonage to Polrain Road is one that was not gonna be addressed. And that's gonna be added in, and hopefully, if no big surprises come on the original project, we can get that done. That being said, the original project was probably gonna start at the Town Hall where it finished off during the restoration of Town Hall. That sidewalk and structure will be replaced. Um, granite curbing all the way out to Grove Street and partially down Grove to the first house, if you will, on the left, coming from town. Um, we're gonna put in a sidewalk there that is non-existent to tie in to the other sidewalk that meets another fifty feet away. That's part of this interconnectivity with uh Complete Streets that they really like to see. Um, and then we will do R and R, which is just rip and replace all old asphalt and sidewalk and aprons from, on Grove Street, all the way down to Main Street. That will not be getting granite down there, but granite where it's more of a safety issue on the main road for kids walking. It's, it's more of a car stop, if you will. That'll be put in there. All the ADA and wheelchair ramps and reconfiguration of the rail trail crossing will all be sorted out under this grant. Going into the Town Hall and there is actually a little extra money to, that island on the side there outside Kevin's window will have granite all the way around that now stone, excuse me, curb as well. That's going to be able, if we can factor that into and tie it in as if it was there with the Town Hall when it was done. That's kind of a rough synopsis at the moment. The good thing is we might be able to get that sidewalk at the tail end of the project for Washington Street out to Colrain added in. That's an issue that I think needs to be addressed since this came in low. The biggest cost on this is granite purchase. So there is a good chance we can get that done as well, which would make me extremely happy.
Gary, that would be funded by the additional 61,000 that's left over and above the 322, bringing it up to the 383, I think Kevin said.
The actual grant is for 382, 382,000 even. At least on my document from Mass. And then yes, that, that additional, we'll stretch that as far as we can on the project. More at the end, in the talk that we had the other day, Kevin and Bill and myself. That was something we would talk to the contractor about and try to do that at the end in case anything popped up that we weren't expecting for any up charges, you know, anything, or you know, God forbid, something does happen that we weren't expecting. And if, if that happens, then yeah, well, yes, we'll move that over there. And it's another safe route for children that ties in going downtown.
That's great.
So we would expect at some point, if everything goes well on amendment, to add that curbing in?
That's a good question, Dick. I got to talk to Bill. We're going to have a pre-construction meeting at some point, once this is signed through JJ Phelan. And that is going to be a topic of conversation. I know myself, probably Kevin, JJ, Joe Phelan and Bill as to how that would work out. But I would assume that would probably be the case.
Where are the Grove Street residents on this? Have we engaged them in updates or whatever?
We have, we had given, I forget the exact date, Kevin. We had done a pre earlier on, it's just a letter mailing out in regards to this. We are going to have that again, and I believe World Tech, they're doing this pretty much soup to nuts. And they're going to handle that as well. So we can have a Zoom meeting and notify the residents on Grove and the few on Washington, if you will, as well. So we can, you know, ease their fears, if they have any, on what type of construction is coming. It's not going to be a huge project. We're hoping three to four weeks, start to finish.
So one of the things that, you know, it's really important, these types of projects, even if it's not incredibly impactful, that we're not doing the roads, we're just doing sidewalks. If people at least know what to expect upfront, it solves a lot of issues during the project. People are much more understanding and they're appreciative. And if worst case scenario, we'll, Chief Collins Brown lives on Grove Street, we'll make sure she, she works.
Those people at the end, I, I do think like the DiMarios and stuff like that, you, you should definitely touch base because I won't get into it, but anyway, it would be good to communicate with them. But Gary, I had a quick question. If you're on the railroad tracks and you go, and you're going towards Boxer, is that, in the, is that curb going to be fixed on the?
Yes, I know the one you're talking about. It's been, it's been an issue and I've been trying to help with Joe and Dick and such on the rail trail for that. It's, it's a bad spot. I know there's been some trip and falls there. That will be ADA compliant, in my understanding, when this, that is incorporated into this project.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Cause the rail trail is inaccessible based on that. And we've gotten bikes hurt there. So that, that would be good.
And I know, Jen, just real quick, the DiMarios there, I understand what their fears were. We are not expanding the roadway there near their property. We're actually going to, the sidewalk that we are going to put will be in the main roadway that is there now separated by a curb. It's going to be narrowing the roadway there, which will be an issue down the road for the Select Board. Cause we're going to see about making that a do not enter. So we can make that sidewalk safe. It just won't be wide enough any longer for two-way traffic. It may be an issue, but the cost, it's cost prohibitive to try to make that wall and build that structure there. We would not have enough money in the grant.
Yeah, that's okay. I just, it's good to keep them informed and that would, I'm sure that would put them at ease to touch base. They're the most, they're the most impacted.
Yes, I would agree. And that's easy enough. I can certainly stop in there at some point. And just to talk to them about that and try to answer any questions for them. That's easy.
As well, I just worked with Gary, we've kind of come up with sort of a standard operating procedure with roadwork. So Route One, for example. We put a preliminary message out, mailed out to all the residents and businesses on Route One. A notice with contact information from the state, our contact information. So if there's an emergency during the night work, someone has an issue, there's a direct line that those people can call to. And so in this instance, again, it's not as impactful, but the residents will have a place where they can call if they have an issue. We'll notify them in that letter that we send out. And then again, we, you know, under normal circumstances, we'd call for a neighborhood meeting, discuss it. Probably maybe even out on site and walk people through what we're looking to do. Obviously that's why the Zoom call is necessary in this case, but just from a construction, infrastructure standpoint, this will be our standard operating procedures when it comes to public notification prior to kickoff on any work. Notice in the mailbox, try to do some sort of public meeting or a neighborhood meeting, I should say, for people to ask questions. And Bill Will from World Tech is already committed to being present on that Zoom call. So from a technical standpoint, if there's an engineering type question, design, we'll have, make sure all the experts are in the room for it.
Gary, when do you foresee the, the work starting?
That's a good question. We're hoping for in the beginning of August. That contractor, my understanding, has just started a Complete Streets project in Peabody. So as I say, I have not received an email. I don't think anybody else has yet back from Bill. He had sent out the document and the notice of award on the town letterhead to the contractor. I was hoping that we could get that signed and have it executed by Monday night. If that's the case for the board meeting. But still, I, I don't think realistically, it wouldn't start any sooner than the week of July 7th. I'm optimistic in that. But I'm, I'm the glass half full guy, so I'm not sure that's realistic at the moment.
If that ties in with what we're talking about before getting the work done in time for the start of school, so that it's in place for the kids.
Yes. And certainly that's a consideration and we, the conversation we have going forward. And certainly that next or first pre-construction meeting with them, with Kevin, Bill and I and the owner as to a, certainly a consideration, especially one of the reasons why I'd like to start at the Town Hall and work away. The sooner we do start that, and if it is backed up a little, we're off of Washington Street, there's fewer, there's fewer foot traffic for children on the Grove than there is Washington there because of the kids coming to town.
Yep, smart.
Would anyone on the board like to make a motion?
A motion to accept the bid of 322,655 dollars from JJ Phelan and Sun Company, Inc. for the Complete Streets project involving Washington Street and Grove Street in the town of Topsfield.
We have a second from Mr. Gant. I'll take a roll call. Ms. Bermudas?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson? Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Spencer?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Yeah, Gary, thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Gary.
And now finally we get to
If I could just for a second with Kevin. Kevin, when we get these kinds of things with the contracts, you've obviously had a number of contractors that responded and that. We get the paperwork on this in board docs. Could we get the bids, who bid and how much they were? So we have an idea of how we're picking the low bidder and to what extent it is a low bidder. That would be appreciated. Thank you.
And just when that gets posted, the lowest bidder that you'll see on that, there was one we had to remove because the, he underbid himself. He did.
Just in general, Kevin, when provide a package with the information, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, town meeting and town election updates.
So by way of update on town meeting, Chief Hubby, myself and Beth were up at Mass Comic Football Field earlier this week, going through all the fine logistics around the activities that will take place. We'll have a number of detailed officers in the parking lot and at certain locations for entrance and exit into the facility. We're planning to have check-in inside the fence line on the track. We'll also have a table there where people can pick up a mask for a warrant if they didn't bring one with them. We'll have flanking the chairs, which will be set up in the middle of the field, about 10 feet apart. There'll be tents on either side with our public safety team present in case there's a medical emergency. That's will be, again, the sole use of those tents. We're actually able to do it by using existing infrastructure tents that we had on hand. So no additional cost for that, which was great. We're working, Beth's working on getting a number of volunteers as well. There will be microphones available to people on the football field area. Handicap seating will be on the track at the very front, just so people don't have, they're in a wheelchair or on a crutch. They don't have to work their way through the field itself. And we've got, as you check in, there'll be chalk lines on the ground on the sidewalk. So people can distance six feet apart. Again, there'll be masks available. And then we've got a number of announcements that the moderator, we're working on just from a housekeeping standpoint, because it's a new venue. Just trying to make sure people have all the information when they get in that we'll share with them. So from an operation standpoint, logistical standpoint, we make us a really great headway. We're getting to the very, very nitty gritty, the details. It's really important to know all the details. Everyone seems to be in good spirits and on board with the plan right now. The items that are, that are, that are, they're sort of out there right now that I wanted to mention that there's two things. One is the next agenda item. So I'll pause on that. But the first one I want to talk about is there was legislation that was passed recently that allows for a reduction of a quorum. And what that ultimately means is we have a hundred person quorum. There's the opportunity to reduce that down to 10. When this was being proposed a few weeks ago, it was specifically being passed to deal with budgets. So if a town forego, forego on all the other articles and just focused on their budgetary articles, they were talking about passing this, this bill that would allow towns to adopt it to just take the budget on. Reading through the legislation and talking with KP, that component of this law is, is no longer in place. The actual law that was passed, as I read it and as it's been told through KP laws, it only reduces the quorum. It reduced the quorum, but you can take on all 33 articles with that reduction. So it gives us some flexibility. Our quorum's 100, 10% is obviously 10 people. We'll, we'll have that with just the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen and the moderator. So we shouldn't have any issue on that in front of a reduction. The, the, I'll mention this as well. It's the next item on the agenda, but it's worth mentioning in the same conversation because there's really two sort of safeguards that are out there that we're going to consider. The first is the quorum reduction that the board can consider and debate and disguise if it's something you want to take, take advantage of. I do want to point out though, if we do, the, we have to have a debate or a conversation, I should say, with the moderator and the Board of Selectmen. And then post the meeting to take the vote by the Board of Selectmen seven days thereafter. So if we, the moderator's online, thank you, Steve. And if the conversation happens right now and it's the desire of the board and the moderator to adopt the quorum reduction, we've already posted a meeting for next week that we can, we can use and take advantage of. We decide not to take on the quorum, we don't want to vote on it, we'll just remove that meeting off the agenda. So we've set that up. Debbie's done a great job helping us with that to, to sort of be ready to go if it's decided by the board to take that on. The second part of that, the other sort of belt and suspender, I guess you could say, safeguard for us is that DLS is asking that towns that have town meetings after June 15th, consider or encouraging towns to adopt the 1/12 budget and submit to them. And then if necessary, it's not requiring us to, to use that if necessary as a result of a town meeting not having, not taking place, whether it's not enough at a quorum, there's an earthquake, something happens that it doesn't allow us to have that town meeting, we'll be able to move quickly into that 1/12 budget for July and then postpone our meeting. Again, sort of a belt and suspender. I think we've all talked through the logistics and, and the date and I think we all feel that we probably, we're going to have the meeting, we have an indoor and an outdoor option. You know, it seems like just polling people, listening to the board and others, it's, you know, I think we'll get to the 100 person quorum without a problem. I'm actually, my mind anticipating 200 to 300. We are going to have enough for the 400 with seats, plus anyone else who wants to join can obviously be there. But those are sort of the items that I wanted to make sure that the board is aware of. And then the last thing and the agenda item we're talking about right now is the resident letter, which I know we wanted to review today as well, which will go out to all the residents with specific information of what to expect for both town meeting and the elections. So there's a lot right now happening around town meeting. A lot of planning, a lot of work by a lot of people. And again, thank you to those people, Beth and others who are doing so. But there are a couple of things that the board, if they choose to do so, can, can adopt in the next, today or the letter today, but then going forward, the 1/12 budget today. And then down the road, seven days, we could look at the at the quorum reduction if it's, if it's the desire of the board.
Can I just ask a question of board members? I'm just wondering, because we may all be in the same place. Does anyone favor a conversation on reducing the size of the quorum for town?
I, I think, I think it's a good thing to, to do. The state's given us the option. It does take, we have to do certain things in, in order to make it legal. But I think it's a worthwhile effort to put that in place because I expect that we will get a regular quorum. But in the event that we don't, then we have that as an action plan, a way of having the meeting.
So Dick, what, what size would you, you're going to pick a number between? 35, okay. I just want to kind of get a sense right now. We don't have to decide, but I thought if everybody was feeling, nope, we don't want to do anything, then we kind of take it off our agenda. But in this case, I think there is Yes.
Can, can I just add a couple of comments here?
Yeah.
What the reduction of the quorum obviously does is what Dick just said, allows us to have a meeting if we don't have 100 people there.
Yeah.
So if you're going to do the reduction of the quorum, there's no reason, you should go all the way to the 10%, which they're legally allowing you to do. In other words, if you're going to do this, it's going to be a backup plan. And the backup plan allows us to have a 10% quorum. And my feeling is, take advantage of that. That means that if for some, and I agree, I think most people agree that we'll probably have a regular quorum there. But if for some reason, you know, the, the news the night before tells of a spike in COVID-19 and people want to stay, stay away from that, let's get the business done that we need to do.
I asked Dick why you thought 35, what was the thinking?
12, that's good. A little bit more than 10%, 12.
It's not 10%. Okay, I see what you're saying. Boyd?
Oh, I, I don't see any reason why you wouldn't go all the way to 10. I mean,
Great, great.
Keep something in your pocket.
Great.
I would say that too. I think it's a last resort. It's, I'm sure we just were able to pass the budget and move forward.
My story comes from Rockport where we had a Saturday morning annual town meeting and a quorum did not show up. They had a fairly large quorum. And as a result, the moderator, Mr. Whalen's equivalent in this case, halted the proceedings, asked the officers' presence to not let anybody leave and send everybody out into the hall to the payphones to call until they got a quorum present. And he said, we have coffee and donuts coming. They're not coming in until you get it done. Hour and a half later, on the business went.
Now, also, everybody should know what you're doing right now is you're discussing whether to have the quorum reduced, but you can't vote to have it reduced for seven days or whatever the, the day. Because Kevin, that was posted yesterday probably, or no, so you have to wait seven days now before you can debate whether to reduce the quorum.
And my apologies for introducing that topic and question then. We will have to continue that when we have our next meeting.
That is a public hearing, is it not, Steve?
Uh, it's not a public Uh, it's not a public, it's not per se, i- i- it's, it's. What it gives is that seven day window for everybody to know that this is one of the topics that the board will debate. It's, I I don't believe KP, I was reading what KP's interpretation was, and this is in the, in the day of virtual. Board of Select, select board meetings. And that was why they gave it the seven day notice, but I do not believe they referred to it as a as a. Open, it it must comply with open meeting laws, but it does not come, need to be an open, public meeting.
A public hearing.
It it it's virtual, it's an open virtual meeting, because what you're doing is you're posting it, waiting seven days for the debate. Typically, you can wait forty-eight hours and debate something, but this is so important that they're giving seven days.
If it were a public hearing, we would have to publish it in the newspaper, correct?
No, you don't necessarily have to publish a public hearing in the, in the newspaper.
We do that each time. Is there a reason we do if it's not needed?
Well, it's based on whatever the law is. If you're doing a zoning bylaw or something like that, it requires a publishing in the thing. You you can have public input. Uh, in other words, listen to the public without a particular publishing in the newspaper. It, there's nothing specific that says you have to. Just because it's a public hearing, have to do that. Anyway, uh, all what, all we're trying to do is is follow the rules, whatever they are. Uh, my concern is, is that. Uh, I thought that if we did this, we would have to have a meeting. To decide to do this, we need to, we need to announce it from a meeting. And I'm concerned that it was or was not on this agenda. Um, I'm not sure.
It was under the town meeting logistics, um, so it, it gave us the ability to discuss whether we wanted to. Debate and vote next week.
Okay, you're, you're, you're going to say that we do have it on the, on the agenda. Okay. As long as it's on the agenda, then we should post a meeting for seven days from now, which is either Thursday or Friday next week, the day before the town meeting or. Two days before the town meeting to go ahead and do whatever the requirements are, and it is seven days out from when we announce, or more, from the day we announce it. Uh, so, yeah, let's, uh, my suggestion is we move on it and 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 get it done, so we have the flexibility in case something happens.
So it's already posted, right? Kevin, you have the meeting posted?
Uh, I believe Debbie posted it seven days after this meeting that we had.
It's posted for next Thursday at ten AM.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
You're welcome. You're so efficient.
I think, I think we have to be, really, we have to be careful. It, because it is so, um, it's it's so important. Um, it's, it's seven days after we announce it, and we are announcing it now, I think. So I think we have to leave it until seven days from now. And ten o'clock doesn't feel like seven, you know, seven, you know, I think. I'm, I'm, I'm open to any suggestions. I just think we ought to do it really by the numbers.
When was the notice postus, posted, Debbie? As long as you post the notice that you're going to debate it, and you have to wait seven days from the posting of that notice.
But how could, how could we post a notice if we haven't had a meeting to discuss the posting of the notice?
Uh, Dick, all you're announcing in the notice, all you're announcing is the intent to debate the issue of the quorum.
As long as I'm fine, Steve, I'm, I'm all set with it. It's great. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
What time did you post it, Deb?
It's for ten AM next Thursday, but I.
No, when did you post it? Today?
Yesterday.
Oh, yesterday, okay.
Full twenty, it's a full seven days in whatever hours plus that.
Right.
Okay.
So it's on the eighteenth, right?
This, this conversation today was, was simply to make sure that you wanted to have that meeting to go forward with having that debate on it, so.
Done deal.
Okay, good.
Back to, uh, back to the town meeting, you were describing certain things about how the town meeting uh might run and think and such as that. Um, and you mentioned detail officers, police officers, I guess, for parking and such. Wha- what is this actually going to look like as far as uh the number of people? What, what are the kinds of jobs that they're going to have, et cetera? Perhaps this is not the the time to go into that uh amount of detail, but um I would be somewhat interested in it. And for example, things like, uh, are we going to have people stay in their cars if it looks like there's a long line and have somebody making decisions as, okay? Free up these and let these people now go in line, because there's, there's no point in standing in a long line if you kind of start snaking around and you're trying to keep six feet and. I mean, there's all kinds of questions of that nature.
So the um, the plan is, we have, we're shooting for six volunteers outside, um, non-police officers. Three at the check-in table, one in the table behind it, one to be sort of an usher to direct people to where the next available chairs are. And one person sort of working between the entrance gate to the, to the track and to the parking lot. Um, we also will have a volunteer, um, I think it's going to be Beth's son, who will be um inside of door ten of the audit, of the fieldhouse. Uh, helping people and directing them to where the restrooms are and making sure that it's one person at a time using the restrooms and that they're, they're not overrun at any point in time. Um, in addition to that, we'll have police officer at the egress, which is if you're facing the field and from the parking lot. Um, to the right of the press box. Uh, that will be uh egress only. And um, we'll have a police officer likely helping the volunteer um on the sidewalk as well. So those are two. We're also planning to have an officer in the parking lot, um, receiving cars in in. Towards where they drop off or right by the um, the the step off would be into the line. And then we'd have another officer at the top um by Endicott Street where they're welcoming people in. And then directing them to go either if they're handicapped and they have a placard, there's thirteen parking spots right in front of the stadium, they'll direct them down there. If they're handicapped and the handicap spaces have been filled up, and one of the people are, are able to um drive them down and drop them off. We'll have a drop off as well. So people who um, uh, who need to have that short distance to maneuver. They'll be work, and there'll be a radio from the officer at the top of the street to the officer in the parking lot, letting them know, and they'll direct them in. The officers will have masks with them as well. So if anyone's uh comes on site and they're not wearing a mask. They, they'll have, be able to offer a mask to the person before they even exit their car. If there's a buildup or um of people. Um, we've already talked, Chief Hubby and I have talked about the flexibility of keeping people in the vehicles and then moving people out um as a group rather than. Stacking the line out if people feel more comfortable doing that. We also have, I think, three uh golf carts. Um, so as the parking lot and people fill up, heading away from the stadium entrance, if people um would like a ride. The golf carts, by the way, are two seats facing forward, two seats facing backwards. Um, the, the people on the golf cart getting the ride would be facing backwards. They have to have a mask, the driver would have a mask, and they'll drop people off at the front entrance as well. And then once the hundred and forty-three pa- spaces on the side of where the uh football field is full. Back, back parking on the other side of the fieldhouse will be available for people, and we'll take those golf carts and move them over there, so people can be shuttled on the golf carts between. The parking lot um where they're parked and the football field. Um, we've got safety um. Uh, for crowd control purposes and to keep people, you know, orderly, we've got um this, the fencing, the metal fencing that we'll be providing as well. To sort of give a little bit of a a direction for people as they line up. Um, and the parking lot works very well on the sidewalk in that it does have enough space to sort of, if we needed to snake it around. Um, um, back and around with, without getting into the parking lot, um, but right up against it and be able to work that way. So. Um, we've been talking through all those very minute, very specific details um of how we're going to handle that and be very customer service oriented when we do it. We want to make sure we're getting people inefficiently safely um and um make all efforts to do that successfully. So for a per, a people person, we're looking at at least seven volunteers, um, probably somewhere around five, give or take.
What was the first, what was the first number?
As, we're looking right now at trying to have seven volunteers um who will be, who will help us, and then six out of the.
Volunteers are are not detailed police officers, these are civilians, okay?
These are civilians, and then we'll have somewhere around five, give or take, um, police officers. Um, all of the police officers and the operations will be run by the Topsail Police Department. Boxford is deferred operations to the town of Topsail.
In every way, okay.
Every way.
How many people fit on the field, based on our estimates and the way you're going to lay it out?
Um, we're per, we're renting four hundred chairs. Um, I did a, see if I got the number, sorry, I didn't have that number right in front of me, but it's. I, a football field's fifty-three feet by a hundred and.
Ri- roughly, roughly. How many are going to fit on the field, so I, so we have an idea of when we're going to overflow?
It was close to the numbers, close to four hundred, I think.
That's good, that's close enough, that's close enough. I understand. It's not two hundred, it's not six hundred, it's in the order of four hundred.
That's my recollection.
Does that assume that some will be, be, because it talks about not, well, we'll get to the letter in a minute, I guess. Okay, um. Lots of detail, thank you, thank you for the work. Um, are you having any more meetings? Were you going to discuss the plans?
Um, we had a small sort of ad hoc group, uh, or a subgroup that that talked yesterday about one o'clock, just a small group. Um, I did have the intent of maybe calling a meeting with that, the larger group that we were working with um on this for next week. Just to give a final rundown of what the operations will look like. Um, that was, that was my plan.
Okay, so I I have a request. Uh, Boyd has been pretty busy these days. I know he had, I thought he was, and he was hoping that he would be in on those meetings. But uh, you, you can speak to this too, Boyd. I believe he's pretty busy. I, I would like to fill into his position, so if you just let me know when those meetings are, I'll make arrangements to uh. To join in and uh and listen in on on where you are. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, Debbie, Debbie, I would second that. Uh, if you would just notify Dick and I. Uh, when those meetings are taking place, um, I'll try to be there.
So if you can be there, and I'll, I'll be there if you can't be there.
It's fine.
Let me know. It'll work it out that way, so we don't have too many, too much.
We can handle that.
Good. But we should have one representative at least.
You know, I'm, my, my problem is that I've got a part-time job and I, and I, I, at this point in time, I don't know when for sure I'm going to be working, so. Uh, I think I'm on, uh, I gotta check my schedule.
But Debbie, Debbie will work it out for us. Thank you, Debbie.
Debbie, Debbie will work it out for me.
And we'll, we can send the invite to everybody, and then if you can make it, that's great. If, this is kind of the last one, so I think this purpose, we'll have the whole plan. I'm not nervous of having too many people. Um, if the board would like to be there, John, Lynn, you as well, welcome to join the meeting. We'll send the invite to everybody.
We would have to post it, wouldn't we, for y'all's show?
It's not a debate. If it's a meeting that's not held, it's not a Board of Selectmen meeting, you, you can be sort of an audience member, I guess you could call it. Um, it's not an official meeting if you're not, if you aren't debating anything. We're just sharing, if I'm sharing information with you, it's not, it doesn't need to be a posted meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to, like to suggest an alternative view on this. Um, I understand interest, particularly among those with a lot of time to. Dig into it on some of this, but um I do want to express some concern that. We as individual members of a board of selectmen should not in any way impinge upon the administrators, our town administrators. Job as defined to manage these processes and reach these decisions. I think some input and conversation both ways is great, but we need to be clear that this is Kevin's responsibility and uh. We can provide inputs, but we are not driving the process for him.
I, I agree with that. I uh do not intend to go to those meetings to tell Kevin how to do it. Um, um, but I just want to, I just want to.
I just want, I just want you guys to know that Kevin's doing a great job on this, and it's actually the moderator who controls. The inside of town meeting, okay? And whatever Kevin has done, I have concurred with. So, and and you're more than happy to understand how the process is working and concur with that, but I think. You have to understand, you guys tell us where to hold town meeting. Once town meeting gets in place, you guys don't have to worry about it. You're just, okay?
And far, far as I'm concerned, you and Kevin are the two people that are going to run it anyway, so.
Correct.
I'm gonna stay out, I'm gonna stay out of it.
Well, Kevin, I appreciate the invitation. I, I will not be able to. I have to RSVP. I won't be able to be there. It's a little too busy, so, thanks. Um, I had one question for you, though. Um, just around the back of the school, I don't know how many people are going to show up, but you said there were a hundred and eighty-three parking spots. In the front parking lot, did you say?
Hundred and forty-three, I believe, is what uh Chief Hubby indicated to me earlier in the week. And that they are the spaces that are between the football field and the school, that section of parking lot.
Okay, so.
Yeah, as you're heading to the administrative building, that parking lot over there on your left, as you're heading to the administrative building, is the area that we'd fill next.
So that's the one that's really going to be full if we get four hundred people. That's going to have two hundred and fifty people in it. So my only thought was, do you need people around the back of the school? Uh, leading people from that large parking lot over the proper way, so they don't come through the, the front or the, you know, it, it doesn't make for an unsafe. Safe situation or people are nervous about where to go, just so there's a little direction from that lot.
Yep, and um, and what we plan to do is there's a, there's sort of a volunteer and a floor officer at the, the check-in table before they go into the fence to check in. In the event, we'll probably rotate um one of the officers to the back there to serve as sort of the greeter. Uh, with the mask and to let people know where to park and then to time it up, and they need a golf cart, radio for the golf cart to come and so on and so forth. So, yeah. No, it's sort of, we'll sort of flip our operations when the first lot gets filled.
Great.
I feel like most of the, I, I feel like that most of the um, the parking lot. Um, is going to be dealt with by the police. My, the people that I am going to be coordinating, the volunteers, will be more handling the crowd as they line up. Um, we will have some police presence there at the field, but we'll be more at the field. And I'll have somebody monitoring the, the restrooms, but um, as far as I'm concerned, I feel like it's more the police dealing with the parking lot. And the far side, and they're going to work with shuttling people over.
Okay, great, because I know when we've gone there for events, some people park at the very beginning of that parking lot and walk along the front of the school. Other people go all the way towards the back and come in the back way by the football field, just so that people know where to go if someone's there directing. That'd be great.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I'd like to, um, basically, if, if there's nothing critical in terms of these logistics. Um, I'd like to go back to the place in the agenda where we were looking to um consider a motion. On approving a letter to residents regarding ATM and the town elections. Would anyone care to read that and so we could pick up conversation there?
Uh, I, I think, you, you want a motion, you said?
There is, yes, there's a motion in board docs.
I think we're still in the process of really working on the letter. I'm not sure that it's a motion to try to, to do the letter as it is. I think we're in deliberation at this point.
Is there any other sense on that?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I know that Kevin, Kevin had suggested some changes to that letter, uh, that you highlighted in yellow. Uh, so I would let you, I would expect you to tell us where you stand with that letter currently.
Sure, thank you. Um, well, real quickly, I do also want to acknowledge Mr. Moderator has been huge help as well in this process, as well as Beth. Um, I know, Steve, thank you. It's, it's been a real great team effort to get us um under these circumstances to where we are with the uh football field.
Uh, given the situation, Kevin, you've done a A-plus job as far as I can see, so you're doing great.
Appreciate that. Um, so as for the letter, um, yes, so we, we, uh, with the help of Donna and Beth as well. Because it's a good team effort in, 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 in everything we do, pulled together um a letter that can be from the town um administrator and the Board of Selectmen. And um, what I sent you was a proposed letter. I had taken and highlighted in yellow. Um, one of the things I was, I, I wanted to get as much information out there as I could um for, for people to, to read through and understand what to expect. At the same time, I didn't want people to sort of see a long, lengthy letter and sort of not take the time to read it because it's too cumbersome. Because I, I know I, I come home at, you know, eight, nine, ten o'clock at night and I grab the mail and. It's not something that's, uh, you know, immediate. So a lot of times I'll put it to the side. It's not a quick reading or something like that. So. I highlighted areas of what we put together in yellow. It was sort of the, if we wanted to consolidate the letter or shorten the letter. The places I was looking at would be the yellow highlighted. If, if the board liked the entirety of all the language, they thought it was helpful and useful. Um, that could stay in. That was just sort of a flexible option for the board to consider that I was looking at. Um, subsequent to submitting, um, Mr. Gant did provide um some updates to the letter. Um, this afternoon, um, all very reasonable, they're, 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 they're good updates. Um, I like the, you provided sort of a little chart there after the first paragraph with the different uh, the annual town meeting, town election, the date. Time, the location, the venue, um, catches your eye. It's, it's, it's a really great suggestion. Um, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with the language. Like I said, I, I sort of put, took a shot at putting something on paper for you folks, so it's kind of get the conversation going more than anything else.
Kevin, I'd like to um suggest here that um the version I'm. Kevin, I'd like to suggest here that the version I'm looking at, which has Dick's inputs as well as some of yours in yellow and so on, I noticed that it would all fit if we just put two, basically we put Kevin Haratunian Town Administrator. Just fill in those lines, get Boyd's name up onto the previous page in the best way possible.
We will put, yeah. Don't worry, Mr. Jackson.
I'm not worried.
But I'm inclined, unless there's a feeling, Dick, you've already had your inputs.
No, I have, excuse me, I'm sorry, I've offered some input. Maybe Kevin, you'd like to read the note that I wrote to you. I have to first of all apologize. He, Kevin did get us a letter at 9 o'clock yesterday morning. Unfortunately, I did not get it until, I did not get to it until this morning. And what I sent was something to get him started to understand that there were some things that might be done to the letter. There are still, and as I said in my note to Kevin about two hours ago, I would continue to work on it. So there are still a number of things. What I would like to discuss as an option here is that I would work with Kevin and Steve to continue to work the letter over. And this will be something that we'll vote on on Monday's meeting. We have a meeting on the 15th, which would give us enough time to get it out for mailing.
So I'd like to ask Steve and Kevin your thoughts on that. Would that be a productive option?
Fine with me, that's fine, it works. I mean, if you got, but you're going to be under the gun as far as making sure the mailing goes out.
Yeah, I was going to say, we're going to send it out that day, so we'd have to put it out the morning of the 18th.
Yeah, I think Kevin probably was planning on printing and stuffing sooner so they could go out Monday morning. So there's just a really tight timeframe. I would be happy having Dick and Kevin and Steve work together and voting now to approve whatever it is that they come up with, because I think it's just moving things around and it's formatting, but the content is there and I'm confident they'd be able to come up with a good letter and not tie their hands to having to wait Monday night.
Yeah, I am too. I think that just makes sense in moving things along.
I appreciate with me.
Yeah, our schedule just for coming into today's meeting was, we're picking up tomorrow the envelopes, which have similar to the warrant, town resident, and they'll be delivered to all the residents just like the warrant. So if you got a warrant, you'll get a letter. And then the plan was to print, I think, the letter ideally tomorrow, but obviously we weren't going to actually probably stuff the envelopes until first thing Monday morning. So we've got a little flexibility in there, absolutely. So if Mr. Gant and Steve, if we work on that, you know, next 24 hours or so, or have something ready by Monday morning over the weekend, I think we'll be in a good place. And Debbie, I'm speaking a little bit for you on this one. I know you were working on sort of that schedule, how does that sound to you?
That's fine, I have to pick up the envelopes tomorrow morning. So, I mean, Monday's fine, we're just going to be.
Dick, if you can send me your updates and your edits to my email, I'll read it tonight and give my approval to Kevin when he can get it first thing tomorrow morning.
Great.
Can I just jump in here? We have someone identified as a quiet lurker, but they're suggesting that in the letter, we identify that there's, there would be, or potentially could be a reduction in the number of people for a quorum, down to 10. I'll throw that out there to let people discuss, but if people realize that, they may turn out, which would again ensure our quorum, which we would much prefer to have. We want a full-time discussion here.
It's a good idea. It could be, I was going to say, Dick and Steve and Kevin could find a way to incorporate that. If necessary, go from 12-point font to 11-point font, increase your margins to your home free.
And we also ship glasses out with the, within the envelope so you can read it. Actually, a magnifying glass there. A procedural item. We are saying that you have to have a mask. So this is, this is an issue. If somebody doesn't want to wear a mask, based on what I heard from MMA's, were you on that email from the meeting that MMA did last week, last week, Kevin? With Blackstone?
I was on a call with the AG a week ago about this in particular.
You did listen to it?
So I was on a call.
Anyway, we need, we need to be able to allow people who refuse to wear a mask to not wear a mask and we don't.
Dick, this has already been discussed and provisions will be made.
Okay, good, the reason is, the reason is the letter does not allow for it. So I just want to make sure.
I'm just, this is where I would like to have you and Kevin and Steve work out what it should be.
And nobody on the board has a problem with that.
And what I wanted to do was move to approve a letter to be edited and finalized by Mr. Gant, Mr. Whelan, and Mr. Haratunian. That will explain to residents the logistics of the annual town meeting scheduled for Saturday, June 20th, 2020, and the town election scheduled for Thursday, June 25th, 2020.
Second.
So we're just generalizing this, we're putting it in your hands, we trust you guys. And rather than try to edit in this meeting, I think that will work a lot better. And frankly, you guys have the sense of what's necessary as well as any of us. So if that's okay, I'd like to go on to the second piece, which is.
We just need the roll call vote, John, for that motion?
Oh, we're actually going to vote on it, that's a good idea.
Oh, I thought you just read the motion.
No, 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 I'm just running on and so on. So my apologies, I now for that motion, we'll take a roll call. Mr. Jackson. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Ms. Bermudas.
Aye.
Mr. Gant.
Aye.
Mr. Spencer.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, thank you very much. And now we will go on to the eighth item as presented on the Board Doc's agenda, the 1/12 budget approval as needed. This has already been discussed and the goal would be to provide a cushion if in fact, for some reason or other, through an act of nature or something unforeseeable, we are unable to hold our town meeting in, before the end of the fiscal year and approve any budget. Did I have that correct, Kevin?
Yes, it was, yes, that's right.
So is there any discussion or should we just vote on that?
I will make a motion.
Please do.
Motion to approve the spending plan for July 2020 as the 1/12 budget as presented in the amount of $11,227,484.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second, any discussion?
So, so. Yeah, you need to, you need to qualify that. You just did it to, you need to say if necessary at the end.
Yes, if necessary, you're right, that should be in there.
Okay, I will withdraw my motion and.
Could we just talk about it for a second, though? This has a very low probability of needing. It's important to have, but it's a very low probability. The great news is that Kevin and Catherine have put the work in so we know exactly what we can vote on, whatever. My suggestion is, if somehow town meeting fails to come up with a budget and we're going to do a 1/12 budget, we're going to have another meeting before July 1st. So my suggestion is that we accept all of the work that's been done. It's locked and loaded, but rather than voting on it, if necessary or whatever else, to wait and have another meeting if we need to, to go ahead and put this and any other things in place because we failed town meeting.
Kevin, is there any downside to, to passing this motion?
There's no downside. It might cause, for people at home, might cause a little confusion possibly of why are they voting a 1/12 if they're planning to do the budget? I think that, you know, like I said, the state, you know, they were encouraging us, or all communities, like I said, with a town meeting after the 15th of June to pass or have approved 1/12 for July, submit it to them to review. If we waited, if we did it now, we'd have it in, ready to go and we could submit that Monday, the day after a town meeting doesn't happen. If we voted, if town meeting doesn't happen on Saturday, we'd scramble, but we, I think we'd still be able to get it in. So we could then call a meeting on Monday for Wednesday, pass it on Wednesday, and I could get it to the state by Wednesday afternoon. And usually I talked with Sue, who's our liaison with the state on this, and she said, we prefer more time, but if you send it to us, we'll approve it, so.
Can I be devil's advocate for a minute? It would take quite a situation for us not to have town meeting on the 20th, either outside or inside. Something significant probably would have to happen to prevent that from moving forward. If that were the case, I'm not sure we could be that confident that two days later, we, you know, casually call another meeting and that Wednesday we vote. If we've already had a lower quorum, so we only need ourselves and the Fincom basically to show up, then it was something huge that happened that prevented that. So I think it's safer to vote this in. And if we don't need it, it doesn't apply and town meeting goes forward.
Okay, I think the motion should include, maybe it did, but I didn't remember it. It should include the word for July 2020.
It did.
It does say that, Dick.
It does say it.
Let's do it, let's do it.
You do have to add, you do have to add the words if necessary, however.
I'm going to resubmit the motion or clarify the motion as move to approve the spending plan for July 2020 as the 1/12 budget as presented in the amount of $11,227,484 if necessary.
Second.
Second.
Do we take a vote? Mr. Gant.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Ms. Bermudas.
Aye.
Mr. Spencer, aye, passes unanimously, thank you very much. Having gotten to this point, our next step is to go into executive session. And Lynn, would you like to read, would you please?
Sure. So I'm, by a roll call vote, the board will enter into closed executive session in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, under Exemption 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, the board will not return to regular open session.
Second.
I will take a roll call motion, a roll call vote on the motion. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Ms. Bermudas.
Aye.
Mr. Gant.
Aye.
Mr. Spencer, aye, passes unanimously. We will now go into executive session. I would like to take a 60-second pause.
Just give me a minute to get everybody off.
Yep, so I'm going to, we're going to take a momentary pause, be right back.